Anything new going on Luke?
Anything new going on Luke?
Well, that's what you want to know.
Hey, I seen there's, they got the streets board down there.
Okay, you guys ready?
I'm fine though.
You guys ready over here?
Here, yep.
All right, we're gonna go ahead and Paul, our meeting reporter, this is the City Council Regular Business Meeting for Thursday, December fourth, it is six P M. Kalen, would you please call or roll?
Councilmember Baker.
Here.
Councilmember Brown.
Here.
Councilmember Cool.
Here.
Councilmember Livingston, your councilmember Minneke.
Here.
Sam Phillips.
I'm here, we do have a full quorum, so we'll move on, item number two is pledge of allegiance, would you please rise and say the pledge of allegiance? Okay, item numbers three is approval of the agenda, would anybody like to move any of the consent agenda items to the regular agenda?
Motion.
Okay, motion by Livingston to approve the agenda, seconded by Minneke, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Most of us same. That motion carries, uh, next item is welcome guests and public comment, thanks for being here tonight, participating in the meeting, uh, we appreciate you being here. At this point in time, we'd open up the dais for any, uh, input that, or anything you want to talk about to, uh, council, myself, or staff, uh, realize that we cannot take action on those tonight, since they're not on the agenda, that violation of the open meetings law, don't want to do that, so, uh, anybody, any takers for tonight? Hearing none, we will move on, item number five is presentations, uh, Mel's here.
I'm from the Norwalk area Chamber of Commerce. Hello, everyone.
Hi.
So, Mel Guanci, Executive Director, Norwalk Area Chamber of Commerce, ten forty-three Sunset Drive, Unit four, Norwalk. Um, so Luca has, um, the slides up for the presentation, I just wanted to come and say thank you for supporting the chamber and share some good news, um, and a year in review, if you will, even though we have a few weeks left, um, we are seeing some new members roll in even this week, so I have year-to-date numbers to share with you guys, we're up to two hundred and forty-eight members, um, that's forty-six new members this year, up a hundred and nine percent over last year, and then we've had, to celebrate those new members, um, we've had twenty-six ribbon cuttings, which is a hundred and sixty percent increase over last year, so lots of exciting things happening at the chamber, with the new members, twelve are new businesses that have moved into our area, and thirty-four are existing businesses that, uh, made the decision to join the chamber, so just a few numbers for you. The other big thing that was really exciting, most of you know, but we did launch Enjoy Norwalk, where every visit feels like home, and that, um, encompasses Norwalk, coming Martin's Hill and Pool, just like the chamber, and it is our tourism brand, and it has things to do, where to eat, where to stay, there's parks and wrecks. Each of those cities has its own individual page, so we can share the history, um, and just highlight key attractions, um, it's going really well, um. I sent Luke, um, a late entry, so I don't know if it'll come up, but we did make these cards that have the Q R code, um, they'll go when ev- when someone checks in at the hotel, there'll be an Enjoy Norwalk card that goes in with your key card for your hotel room, and there's a Q R code on there that, um, you just scan and it'll bring you to Enjoy Norwalk, and while you're staying at the True Hilton, um, and the Marriott, you'll know what to do, and so, we're pretty excited about that. On the next slide, um, I have the, um, I wanted to share, all of our members are in our business directory, oh yeah, there's the cards, guys can see them. Um, so we're pretty excited about those, um, the business directory, um, I wanted to share a little bit about what industries make up the chamber, and I know I only have three minutes, I'll go really fast, but seventeen percent health and wellness, twenty-six percent retail, eight percent restaurants, nine percent financial, fourteen percent nonprofits, and I kind of put manufacturing, automotive, and construction in one, um, at twenty-two percent, so, pretty excited about the diverse membership that we have, um, and then the value that the business directory gives is ninety-eight thousand five hundred and eighty-two, which is a great value of extending all of these businesses, marketing efforts, bringing awareness to them, and thank you for supporting the chamber, we're doing great stuff, and it's really hard to squeeze it all in in three minutes, but just a little progress, um, right now to drive business to all the business, um, businesses for the holiday season, we have Jolly Holiday Bingo, gets all the residents involved and visiting all the businesses, and they get stamps, they turn it in for a chance to win, so this is a great way to drive traffic to the businesses and help them thrive during fourth quarter. Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Thanks Mel.
Any questions for Mel?
Next time she gets five minutes at least.
All right. All right, thanks Mel.
Yep.
Uh, item number six, consent agenda, can I get a motion?
Motion.
Okay.
Okay, I got a motion by Brown. That wasn't, whoa. That Brian?
Yeah.
Might have been Brian. Uh, okay, so a motion by Brown, seconded by Minneke, Kalen, would you please call or roll?
Councilmember Baker.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Cool.
Yes.
Livingston.
Yes.
Minneke.
Yes.
All right, that motion carries, item seven is old business for consideration, old and new business for consideration discussion, possible action. Item A is the second reading of an ordinance amending chapter one seventy-six subdivision regulations by amending section one seventy-six dot O eight, design standards, and one seventy-six dot O nine, construction of improvements, providing for amended road construction requirements and warranty and maintenance bond requirements for public infrastructure. So, we're changing our subdivision ordinance to require sub drains and granular subsurface for all new streets, as well as some revised, uh, language for bonding. Council passed the first reading at our last meeting, uh, I believe that staff has had some discussions with several representatives from the development community, and we understand these changes will have some direct impacts on developers and the cost of new housing in Norwalk, uh, so I'll turn this over to Wayne, Luke, and Jim, who wants to go first?
Jim, you want to take it first?
I guess I can go first, uh, we, uh, we have had some meetings, I met with some developers this afternoon also, uh, where we discussed potential changes and got some input from them, uh, the area that I've worked mainly on is the warranty maintenance bond area, and that has changed substantially since the first time you saw it, which would have been two meetings ago when you had tabled it, uh, if you remember at that point in time, there was less paragraphs, and you know, one of them was straight out like what the Urbandale procedure was, that's, it's all changed since then, because listening to their input and everything, instead of gone from single bonds to allow, allowing the, the multiple bonds from the different subcontractors, uh, we've, um, we've kept the maintenance period the same, I think we just addressed a lot of more of the legal issues or questions that they had, uh, still, I believe it, um, emphasizes once again developer responsibility on maintaining, uh, on maintaining the warranties and everything on the roads once they are transferred over, uh, and just, e- even though we feel that developers always had that responsibility, this kind of just sets it, sets it in, in stone a little bit more, I think you may before the, uh, next, the final reading, have a couple little edits here from our meeting today, uh, we had a good meeting today, and we're gonna get some little bit further input, uh, from the developers and their representatives, before then, the, before the third meeting, but I thought the meeting went well today, and, uh, feel pretty good about, uh, the, the bonding requirements at this point in time.
Okay. So the item that, uh, I had included in the packet was a agenda statement that contemplated some kind of a phase in, or an ability for the city to assist the developers in offsetting the cost of that, the added street standards, so the sub, granular subbase and subdrain. If you recall, one of the things that we were struggling with a bit is when do we implement these standards, if we delay it a year, then any new streets put in within that year timeframe fall under the old standards, we don't benefit from this, uh, a more robust design. So we put together a few options, and I specifically put my name on this, because I don't know that there was full staff agreement that we should be offering up a cost share. Uh, I feel a little bit stronger about it, because this benefits the city to see it implemented more swiftly, uh, if we step in and help with the cost. So I laid out, uh, several options, and ultimately, um, the recommendation is alternative one, which would be option three, and option three, uh, essentially is a three-year phase in, uh, in the first year, uh, going with offsetting seventy-five percent of the cost, that would be roughly a cost to the city of about four hundred and thirty thousand, uh, and then it ratchets down twenty-five percent each year, down to the third year at a hundred and forty-four thousand. I did talk to Gene about how we would finance this, or where we would place this in the budget, and of course, that's, that's not an easy decision, but one that would have to be considered, uh, in each of our next three fiscal years. Any questions?
Yeah, what did, sorry.
Go ahead.
What did Gene say? I mean, I get that we're gonna have to figure it out, but does she have a suggestion of how we're gonna figure it out?
I do, I, Luke wants to respond, or, um.
Go ahead.
I suggested three different areas, um, I suggested using some local option sales tax, some road use funds, and then, um, some general fund reserves, and hopefully, um, we can budget for those, I mean, I think we're at the point where, if we're in fiscal year twenty-seven, um, we can start budgeting, depending on when this goes into effect, so. That would be my suggestion.
Thanks.
Might we control that, I guess, uh, that's just a question out there, mayor, because different developers are gonna want to move a different rate, and, uh, will the staff somehow facilitate how much we do each year based on financial or can do, how might you make that?
Sorry about that. Can I add on to your question?
Sure.
Just, it might be on the same path. So this only applies to existing, uh, preliminary plats that have been approved, so if we took all those, and they all decided to take advantage of the program, what would the bill be?
Well, that would certainly be a lot, sorry, go ahead.
Say Luke, uh, George, I don't know if you saw, but there's also a, a potential that we could limit funds to a set amount, so that it doesn't, like, you know, every.
I was getting at that, so, if we did limit it, that's my preference, but if the limit, or if this is the limit, potentially, to what possibly be, then I'm oka- kind of okay with it.
Yeah.
It might be less, but won't be more.
And just to give you a little insight, uh, our community development staff went back and looked at typically, how many, uh, how many streets are added each year in new subdivisions, how much new concrete is poured? And so the number we came up with, uh, was roughly the average of the number of new streets that we see come up each year, so I feel like if we do limit this number, it's very consistent with what we've seen over the past several years.
I would like, I would like to know the maximum number could be if they, all the preliminary plats were actually.
I don't know that, Harris, that might be a question that, uh, you and your staff would have to answer, what the maximum number would be?
Say, we can get you that, I want to hesitate a guess tonight, but yeah, we can, we can research that.
Would that be highly improbable, or impossible to even tease, or what are we talking about?
Probably, I mean, right, like, that investment is based on more than just our, right, like, it's market demand, it's all that stuff, so.
You can have somebody to go out and do it.
Yeah.
Like a market with lots based on the fact that.
Yeah. Right.
So.
It's not worth that much.
I'd tell they could be prudent.
It would be very costly, that, that'd be a lot of capital that the developer would have to put in, that's just gonna be sitting there.
Right. And that, there's some preliminary plats that we've approved that are contingent upon other things happening before they can go on to their next phases, so, like, in that case, I don't know that I would even include that portion of it, because I don't see those other things stepping forward in that next three-year period, so, you know.
I, I would be much more comfortable, though, if we had a maximum number, okay, because what could possibly go wrong? I mean, we've been down there for.
Yeah, I think the proposal, isn't the proposal to have a maximum, Bron? It is. Yeah, it is. We, we didn't name that number yet, but it's in there. Okay, good. This is seventy-five.
It's number three.
Five, or, yeah, yeah. The sixty-four.
So before the final reading, we wish out what that maximum number is?
I suppose if life changed quite a bit, we could change that number, future council.
Because, right.
Propose, whatever it might be.
Proposal, yeah, proposal number three right here has for the first year, four hundred and thirty-two thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars, I would think that would probably end up being the max. Sounds good. I, I, yeah, I think you could specify that the, the numbers that are in, in there are the maximums that we're going to distribute, yeah.
So do we feel like this prioritizes our citizens over the developers, while still giving the developers some grace? Because that's my priority, is prioritizing our citizens, we're taking services away from citizens left and right, and, because we have to, right? Because that's what our budget is demanding, and I am okay giving developers some grace, but not at the expense of our citizens, and I feel like that's what's been happening, our roads continue to get worse, because we can't fix them, because we don't have the money, and the developers are saying, we don't want to have to bear that burden, and I want to make sure that our citizens are being put first.
Jackie, I, from my perspective, I can comfortably and confidently tell you yes, however, it is the long game, meaning, doing this now is an impact that doesn't come until about thirty to forty years down the road.
But our citizens will have better streets.
Correct.
And you know, I haven't seen it.
My question, I'm just gonna throw it out there, don't need to create, stir up the pot too much, but I guess that's my job. You know, you get to build a fifty-year street with a forty-one. My question is, if somebody, I've heard a lot of blame from subcontractors that impacting under a sewer or some pipe, I get that, and they don't do it right, and, and the, the road breaks down. Yeah, and I have no, but it's just my opinion, but what, uh, how long will that show, take to show up, four years enough, I guess is the question. I bring that up, if, if that can last, this is a Tony question, so if it's done wrong, could it take ten years for that to show up, and if it does, it's really bad, um, and not saying we extend the warning up, excuse my voice, uh, to ten years, four years is probably fine, my point is, the inspection process, I, you, you'd think the developer would want that inspection process, process to be very good, so that doesn't happen. Things happen, people might not be able to be there on time, but things could happen, but at the same time, is four years enough to cut, to catch it? And so, if, if, if it takes more than four years for something to show up, I don't have that much incentive to inspect it as much, because the odds of it not ha- happening in four years are pretty good, so, and not saying that people think that way. But I.
Saying that you, you think that way.
Thinking that. So.
Yeah, just kidding.
You know. So that's, that's my point, if you could follow that whole train of thought. Tony, can you answer that?
So, so, yeah, my short answer is, I, I think four years is enough, now, now, are we still gonna see failures, uh, um, after four years? Yes, of course, that's a possibility, but, but, uh, you know, I want to differentiate between construction-related failures, and that goes back to your question about it's a good inspection and good construction, and, and say, design-related, related failure, so most of our construction-related failures can, have, and will continue to show up within that first four years, and that has to do, do with more compaction effort and settlement of trenches and, and pavement failures and that kind of thing. So, uh, so I think the maintenance bond period is good, um, now, um, uh, inspection's an in- interesting question, because, you know, we, we as a city recognize that that's a significant cost to developers, and so, you know, we're, number one, we're fortunate that we have a lot of great contractors that were working for the city on multi-utility infrastructure, underground contractors and paid contractors, all, all, for the most part, all fantastic contractors, so we're very fortunate. Um, and we don't have to necessarily spend a hundred percent of the time watching these contractors, uh, perform this construction, what we, we, we recognize that's a very significant cost to contractor, or to developers, and so we spend a couple hours each day, you know, we, last year, we had eight subdivisions going on at once. So we spend time on every one of them, watching the construction methodology making, and we're there, so we're there a couple hours each day, we're there a hundred percent of the time during testing, and we're there, uh, pretty much a hundred percent of the time during paid operation, so, we recognize this as a significant cost to developers, we watch their methodology, we're there for all the testing, to, to, to make sure that their, their, their methods are, are, are working properly, and, and you know, we think with, with the great contractors that we've had, you know, we, we think that's enough, now, can we spend more time out there to give the city some more assurance that everything is constructed properly, and, and maybe we'll have less failures, certainly we can, but, uh, there's a significant, very significant cost associated with that to developers. Certainly we can, but, uh, there's a significant, very significant cost associated with that to developers.
You know, Mayor, while we're talking about, uh, failures and. And, uh, the geo pieces of this. I was thinking about that since we last met. And it would seem like the key to a lot of this stuff. Is the geo study. And it seems like. Well, facts are kinda stubborn thing. Facts don't have an opinion one way or the other. They just present the truth. When the city's done geo studies. Seems like quite often they come back, you know, wanting. Something a little extra added, something a little extra done. When we get these geo studies from the developers, they come back, oh, everything's fine, we'll just go ahead. I'm not casting aspersions, I'm just talking fact, okay? I wonder, or I'd like to see the council consider. Us doing the geo study. And our engineer directed the geo study. And of course, we would expect the developer to pay for the cost of that geo study. But if we did that. We'd set the parameters. We'd establish a criteria. And, and pretty much be satisfied in their own mind. For getting the clearest picture that we can. Now, I'll open that up for debate by the other council members, but. I don't think that'd be a bad idea.
Well, Ed, I, I guess I'm not entirely sure with the new standards that we're setting. You know, are they negotiable, uh, based on geo studies, you know? So I, I, I don't understand that portion.
I think there are, I think the standard that we're setting is a minimum. So if we say there's.
Got it. So certain geo studies could say it needs to be.
Yes, there we go.
Yeah. Well, what do you think about that, Tony? What Ed said?
Um, it, it, it's, it's one of the things I brought up in our staff discussions. Yeah, I mean, that's a possibility. Now, you know, we, our, our developers hire independent geotechnical engineer, you know, uh, but they're, you know, they're working directly for the developer. But, uh, but I think, you know, I, I. You know, I think they're, 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 uh, they're, they're, of course, that we. Got historically are pretty gen- more general in nature, you know, so pointing out these, these requirements through your design life and looking at the soils. Conditions and, and all these factors that, that we're gonna require. Um, are important. You know, we get, we've got, in the past, we've got geotechnical reports that, that talk about. You know, that, you know. For the most part, our minimum standards are always enough, but they talk, but, but they'll, they'll talk about some things that we can do to make the roads better. And, and they'll still call those something like enhancements. You know, so it's not really required, but it's gonna be better if you do this, you know, so. So I think, uh, you know, we, we just get, we just, uh, we want our, our geotechnical reports to be more. Uh, site-specific and, and less general in nature. Um, if, even, you know, I, I'm, I'm not opposed to really either way, the way we have it in the subdivision regulations or. Or the city doing it, if, uh, if we feel that's important. Uh, we could certainly do that and. And that costs of, yeah, we'd still recommend that cost be passed.
Is that, Luke, does that go in the ordinance or is that just a policy?
To have them pay for, uh, geotechnicals?
To have the city start doing the geotech.
Um.
And.
We, we probably would wanna put in the work, cause we have other spots where we, it's similar to how we have. A review engineer for, um, just our construction plans and prelim plats and stuff. I think it can fall under that. Section, but it would probably be good to call it out specifically that, under that section, this is the thing that the city. Does and charges for. Would you agree, Jim?
Yeah.
Okay.
Or, but that certainly could be something I'd follow up with after.
Right, and that's, cause it's not, that's not in chapter, it's not in section one seventy-six, it's in some other section.
Yeah.
Under the inspections and. Things like that.
Are we coming down a slippery slope though where? I guess in the finance world. Corporations hire their own auditors, um. Now you're kinda more or less saying, no, the, the federal government or the FCC needs to audit virtually, and that's when it really gets. Bad. I, uh, I'm just. I'm having a queasy feeling here.
I don't wanna audit anybody.
Well, no.
Well, something.
It's a independent analysis. That's required.
But the point would be is it, it is independent.
Discuss right now, I mean, it's.
Well.
I think, I think it's okay to discuss it, but I think. The best way to do it, I mean, if council said, I want it in this ordinance, we could figure out a way to do it, but I don't think it's quite appropriate. I'd rather bring it up another time where we get everybody an opportunity to think about it and look into it.
So we could go ahead and pass the ordinance we have now. Knowing that we might tweak that section later.
Or it would be, it'd be a different.
Oh, it would be a completely different, yeah, that's my point.
Yeah.
I actually like that better.
Luke, what were you gonna say?
Well. One of the things I wanna make sure is clear is part of our efforts with these changes in the subdivision ordinance is a recognition that. The amount of funds for city government services is not going to increase in the future. Ramp up these bonding requirements, uh, ramping up the street standards means that we can pull some of our staff time back out. Of the amount of management of these projects. There's, I think there's a fear from staff side that if we're getting more involved. By having oversight with those geotech. We're driving more of that process, that's drawing more staff time to be involved with each development. That's just a concern.
I think that's.
Concern.
Yeah, I think. If you guys wanna talk about that at some point in time, we can have that, you can future agenda item that one. But. I think we can stop talking about now, just move on with. Okay, other discussion questions about. Ordinance change. Public comments?
Dustin Miller, uh, Indianola, Iowa. Uh, I represent, uh, I'm, uh, the. Council for the Developers Council, which is a subset of, uh, the Greater Moone Home Builders, um. Greatly appreciate it. I think Jim undersold it. Uh, we had a great meeting this afternoon. I felt like, um. It was a really good, uh, way, especially for Jim and I, to kinda talk about perspectives. Uh, as to what we kinda offered back and forth. I owe him some things tomorrow, as I told him, I've been all across the metro area today, back and forth. Uh, multiple different times. Uh, I'll, I'll cover both, and let me say this out of the gate, and I think this kinda goes to Councilmember Livingston's question. At least the folks we represent, not all developers are the same, we get that. The folks that are coming to you really is in good faith, trying to understand the perspective and try and reach the same goals. Uh, one of the things I talked to, to Luke about in this is, um, I in particular, for those that know me, I know the mayor knows me pretty well. And Jason knows me pretty well. Um, my day job is not this. Uh, I have the pleasure of being at the Iowa Capitol, um. And I'm sure you're jealous, uh, on a daily basis. Um, and, and we are the tip of the spear, myself in, in particular, on getting you new growth. Um, you know, that was a huge mistake they made in twenty twenty-three, especially for communities like this, because you're. You have a disincentive for growth. Um, and that makes no sense. And so we truly are the tip of the spear. In fact, just last week, I provided language to policymakers to make sure they use the wrong language, they use new construction. That's not how your assessor thinks. You need new valuation. Which will then, if all of a sudden, if they are talking about expenditures in the future. That cap that they would put doesn't impact you as much if we're talking outside of, of those growth limitations. So we really truly wanna be partners. We're the ones that really stand in the middle too, that, that say you have to have appropriately funded communities to spur the growth. So we wanna be partners with you. On the bonding side, I think it's pretty simple, as Jim said, uh, I didn't have a lot of time today, but I owe him just a few tweaks, uh, to go back and forth on some language on the bonding side. But it was really a good perspective of what, really what you're trying to do is to limit, uh, a developer from just throwing their hands up, saying, hey, it's your problem. And we understand that we need to be part of the process with you. That's why we offer the development agreement aspect in the language. Um, as a contractual, you know, we need to be, uh, 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 steering the ship and finding who the problem is and, and helping, working with you, uh, fixing it. Uh, it, you, the, your discussion about the geotech is, is really interesting, Councilmember Cool, cause that's really what we kind of offer back. Um, you know, we feel like, uh, the, the, the design standards you put in is a one-size-fits-all, is kinda what the consensus that people, people want. What we kind of offered is, um, we like the idea of the site-specific geotech. Um, we don't know, you know, it'd be interesting to know if you're seeing those on a regular basis. I don't think we have an opinion on, you know, where it's coming from. But site-specific, I mean, for us, we would much rather trust the science. Uh, if we're really going to trust the science and get you much more geotech report. Uh, what I flagged for the staff is what we put in the language initially was to actually require more geotech reports. That are more site-specific based upon phases and then dictating how the streets get built then. Or the other flip side is, um, what's interesting is if you use this other, okay, we're setting a floor, but we can go above. You know, kind of our perspective is, well, if you trust the science, then trust the science and, you know, um, then. I, i- if we're just going to set the design standards, then why are we adding the additional cost of the geotech report? So for us, our preference, one of the things we've come to is, is there a path where? Either we say, let's get much more specific on the geotech report, see specifically what you need and build it towards that. Or we go towards, hey, the design standards are set, you guys are getting what you want. Why are we doing the geotech report if you're getting that base level? Cause it's just an additional cost. Uh, so that's really our perspective, what we came to, uh, you with, and you know, I know certainly there's, there's a perspective here of. This is what we're gonna do, this is what we wanna do, but ultimately for us, it's, we're taking a risk there when we say. Let's get much more site-specific geotech. And do whatever that geotech report. We're willing to take that risk. Uh, but ultimately, it seems, you know, what's good for the goose is good for the gander. If you're gonna trust the science, let's trust the science. And I, you know, to hear Tony's comment about site-specific. Um, that really speaks to us is, let's get site-specific, you know, we do have, we at least have examples, I don't know, you know, Luke. We had this kinda back and forth, but it was a pretty short meeting today. Are you getting those site-specific based upon phases? We're committed to doing that in a much more regular pattern. If that's the path you wanna take. Um, but ultimately, if the design standards are gonna be set as is, we would say, okay. Then we don't really trust the science, let's just, uh, get rid of the geotech, cause it's just an additional cost, when we all know that the cost is going to be much. I can't say enough, uh, greatly appreciate your consideration in the phasing in. Um, you know, for folks that have made investments, I think that shows a really good faith effort of, of a partnership. And as I said. I represent some folks that, you know, I think Jim made pretty clear, the folks we had around the room, we're not necessarily where you're seeing the failures. But at the same time, we're gonna get thrown in that too, and we wanna be partners with you to make sure that that doesn't happen.
Thank you.
So Dustin, five years ago, we were told, trust the science, trust the science, get the geotech report and trust the science. So I see it as. One of two things. Number one, either the science doesn't work. Because we still have failing streets, or the developers are holding some information back. Because we still have failing streets. So which one do you think it is?
Well, that's just it, as I, you know, I think we have some examples where folks feel like they're getting, our, our people, and it's their perspective. Are giving you an early-on geotech, and maybe it doesn't have the site-specific that would be based upon phases. And we would commit to, and that's one of the things, it might not be perfect language that Jim and I could work out, we're much more committed to individualized on the face side.
Why wasn't that proposed five years ago? Because we, we were told that we were gonna get geotech reports for new development. And that is, is that not what is happening?
I don't know, there was a, a discrepancy, I guess, in, in what we came back with, back and forth. Now, some of our folks are saying that they're not do- doing geotecs based upon phases.
Said, huh, they said the entire, oh, you know, but it's like.
No, so each one is different. So that's the problem is, is that. You can say that you wanna do the geotech report, but I don't, I don't, I don't. I don't know for sure at this point. Whether we're getting all of the information from the geotech report, or is the science failing?
I think, one of the things I'm, I guess I'm thinking about is. If, if we've been building streets according to the geotech report, right? Then something's still going wrong. Right? So. Uh, what is going wrong there? And. You, Tony, talked about, they, they give you their opinion on enhancements you could make. And so, uh, I have no idea if the standard then is you always build a street. With the recommended enhancements in the geotech report. Uh, this is beyond tonight. But because the normal reports have not. Created the results the developers or our citizens want. Then I don't feel like. Or, a- and maybe it could be because they're not doing enough of, maybe, I don't. I'm not an expert on geotech, uh, reports. So I think I agree with you in the fear that like. If we've been building according to these reports, well, that doesn't work. So then. It, you know, okay. What if we build according to like? All, all right, they recommend all these enhancements, and that's our strategy every time. We, we go with all the enhancements they suggest. It's just an op- I'm not saying we should do that. I'm just saying. As much as we like Dustin, that's, that's our fear, is that just the report and building according to that is not getting the results we want. So we have to do something different.
So we've established we need to work on geotech. But maybe not now.
One other thing.
Now, I might need to get educated on that, what's in the geotech report, what, what is, what is.
Consistent.
Right, it's the science. I, I have no idea. I've never seen one.
Yeah.
Don't pretend.
Yeah, and what you, I mean, um, we made, uh, Luke shudder a little bit, cause we brought up the, the reflex, um. But, you know, ultimately over a site, you're gonna get recommendations for each. And I think kinda to your point, if you don't trust the geotech report. That's fine, and you've set these design standards, then, then why do it? I mean, that's kind of our perspective, is either we do it one way or the other. Just from a cost standpoint.
Yeah, right.
Yeah.
Well, but, okay, so. When the school was building the stadium. Seventy-five percent of that area needed. Additional, well, they fly ash get incorporated in there. So within, just within that small area, there's a twenty-five percent, seventy-five percent, twenty-five percent was okay, seventy-eight percent was bad, and there was varying. Bad layers. I don't know how you could do, h- how can you do the geo? What's gonna be the cost of being able to? Do a geotech report on. Maybe. Every ten yards down a street or a proposed street. And, and. I think, I, I think if you have minimums and then you do a general geotech report that says, no, you. You need to go deeper, you know, you have more of a subbase. In this, in these areas, I think that's much more preferable than.
In, again, you know.
The science that we haven't seen work.
Well, and that's what I would say though, is, you know, what you're putting in as far as standards are the enhancements. And it's a one-size-fits-all. It, and so then. You're asking to put an additional cost on. To look for potential additional, uh, impacts, but on a report that you didn't trust at the first.
Here, I, I guess I would recommend that we.
I'm not sure it's a report that we didn't trust at the first. I think it's information. That we were given about the report or where the report was obtained, or how the report was obtained, or what information was in the report, right? Uh, you say, you know, science is science is science, and that's not, in my experience, that's not at all true. If it were true, then there wouldn't be competing surveyors, right? It's all the same science. Except that everybody comes out with a different perspective. So it's not all the same information. You're able to glean information that suits. What you want to drive. Same with statistics. You take out of the statistics what your point is and how you support your point. So, uh, yeah, I can't get behind. I, I, I think we've gone way far afield, right, than what we're supposed to be discussing today in this agenda, but, um, I can't. I can't get behind that. We shouldn't have the information for both cases.
I think we should consider the ordinance tonight, Mayor, and then, uh, maybe on another day, get more educated on. Geotechnical surveys.
That's good.
Thanks, son.
I do have a question on the, uh, seventy-five, fifty, twenty-five, um, reimbursement. Originally, I thought that a lot of the other cities that we're helping out were only at the fifty percent level. I think the seventy-five, we're gonna have more of them in the first year than I think later years. Is it prudent to think maybe about fifty, fifty, fifty for those three years instead of seventy-five, fifty, twenty-five? That's all I'm throwing out. Cause it sounds like that's what other communities are doing. I don't understand why we need to be.
Brian, the reason.
Brian, the reason. Um, the main reason that. That we've proposed this idea of a phase in is so that we can immediately implement the standards. So that means in twenty-twenty-six, a street that goes in will have these additional standards. That's the main reason, cause ultimately this phase is out, which means by the fourth year. Norwalk would be putting nothing towards subbase and subdrain. It's only to offset that immediate cost that they have not planned for.
And I thought that's what the other communities in the metro were doing, but it's a fifty percent level.
Um, the, I guess the, the main one I understand is Ankeny, and I think that they just have ongoing cost share.
That's professional.
So do you think seventy-five is required?
Uh, none of these are required, you could implement it and say.
But we wanna be fair.
I, I think one reason why seventy-five was that first year, because the way the ordinance is written and in front of you right now. These new road standards will not apply to road construction that occurs this following year. As long as it's done by the end of the year. And then there was a discussion by council, I think even the first meeting that, you know, if this is so important, shouldn't we figure out a way to get it done right away?
Okay.
And I think that seventy-five was kind of a response to, okay, this is a way that we think we could probably get it done right away.
Okay.
Yeah.
And they have to have some time to build it into their plan and their financial.
Okay. Right.
Alright, I was just curious with that, what you guys thought?
Point being, they don't have to do.
Yeah, you don't have to.
They don't have to do it the first year.
Yeah.
But we wanna be good partners too.
Alright. Yep. So, Luke, do you want two motions out of this? First one to decide the phase in, and then a second one to approve the second reading?
I, more clarification is appreciated, so yes, two, two motions would be great.
Let's have a motion to amend the ordinance. Uh, with whatever option council decides.
Oh, we have that. I'll make a motion to amend the ordinance to option three.
Second.
Okay, that's right, that's right. So I got a motion by Brown, second by Livingston to amend. The ordinance. The proposed ordinance to, for option number three. For the phase in. Okay. Any, any more discussion on that? Aaron, what do you call on that?
That's member Brown.
Yes.
Cool.
Yes.
Livingston.
Yes.
Minneke.
Yes.
Baker.
Yes.
Alright, that motion carries. And I get a motion to approve the second reading as amended.
Motion.
Oh, so motion by Baker, seconded by Livingston, any further discussion on that? Hearing none, Kaylin, what do you call roll?
Also member Brown.
Yes.
Cool.
Yes.
Livingston, yes. Minneke, Baker.
Yes.
Alright, that motion carries. Alright, so seven B, continuation of a public hearing regarding an amendment to the north zoning ordinance to conduct amendments related to gates and barriers. So this public hearing was opened up at our last meeting, and it's continued on this meeting, I'm gonna turn it over to Luke.
Yep, so, uh, we initiated this zoning ordinance a couple meetings ago, uh. Had some, a couple meetings of discussion at P and Z, uh, that's why we didn't have it for you last time. Um, they had some changes they wanted to see prior to it coming forward. Um, so we had had some requests for, uh, various commercial properties up and down Iowa twenty-eight. Um, for the, uh, installation of security gates. Um, that primarily right now is regulated through our fire code. And our zoning, and there's no other like code that really talked about, uh, gates and barriers, um. So we initially brought it to you for initiation, just to see which way you would want us to take it, do we wanna allow these things? Um, and put some rules in place, or we just wanna say they're not allowed? Um, so we came up with an ordinance, uh, based on that discussion to allow them and put some rules in place. Um, I did find some other zoning, uh, language out there that I base this off of, so it's not just wholly my, uh, creation here. Um, really what the ordinance does is, uh, define security gate, um, and adding that new definition into our definition section. And then adds a new section to the fences, um, area of the zoning code, so we'll kinda treat this as a fence. Um. We state that security gates are allowed in basically, uh, all of our commercial industrial districts. And, um, allowed on townhome and apartment zoning. And then in non-residential uses in our, uh, residential districts. So that would be like, uh, school, a lot of our schools are actually in a residential district. Um, so those non-residential uses, uh, would apply, this would all apply to that. Um, so those security gates, uh, they have a couple requirements they have to meet. Um, that all gates have to meet, the first one being, uh, following sections of the international fire code. They already have to meet those, we're just kind of hauling it out here as well. Um, so that's five oh three point six, security gates, and then D one oh three point five is an appendix. That talks about fire apparatus accessible gates. Um, our fire marshal, uh, did help me with this language and, um, in reviewing things and did mention that. Um, as part of this, at some point, he'd like to bring forward an amendment to that D one oh three point five. And so his kind of, uh, first draft of changes I did include in the staff report. Um, so those are some details that we would bring forward, um, as a separate ordinance. Um, but it doesn't have to go through the zoning process, that's just a change to the fire code. Uh, the second one, uh, just providing some, uh, space for a pedestrian to, um, move around the security gate, be that. Um, just a lack of a fence, or, you know, a sidewalk with another pedestrian gate next to it. Um, just trying to provide that, uh, pedestrian movement if somebody needs to get out of that space. Really, a lot of this is what happens in emergency, how are you accessing and getting people out of an area? Um, want gates coated in a material that will prevent corrosion, so we can keep things looking nice. Um, that's more of the aesthetic side of things, we didn't really put anything that was too, uh, particular about what they looked like. Um. We included that they should have some, uh, provisions for illumination or reflector as I, reflectorization. Which I couldn't believe was a word. Um. Just so that, you know, we don't want people driving into these things at night, right, you wanna be able to see things. Um, and then with six and seven, we kinda split these two out into two different ideas. One, gates intended for, to permanently restrict access, so think of like an industrial site that. Um, you maybe have to present a badge at a security gate to get into every day. Um, something that's more locked down, um, wanting to make sure that that type of space has enough. Uh, queuing up to that gate so that we don't have backups onto public streets, right? So that's the main, uh, thing with that one. Um, and then the, then there's gates intended for temporary restrict access, that's what we've kinda had proposed to us now. Um, property owner owns a business, wants to restrict access on off hours when they're not around, kinda secure their property. Um, so that would be that temporarily, uh, restrict access. And really what we're focusing on both of those, um, is providing space for our fire apparatus to be able to be on the site. Um, and out of the public way, so especially with a lot of these being proposed in Ohio twenty-eight. You know, a lot of the concern was, you know, do we have to stop on the highway and then get out to go? Manipulate things at the gate to then get into where we need to go. Um, so this provides a opportunity for us to say, no, we gotta get that apparatus fully off of the right of way. Um, we did word it pretty specifically as wholly on site, not on the property or anything. Um, because again, the idea was just to get it out of the right of way, so. If you're still kind of in the taper of the driveway, but you're out of the way and where you're exiting the vehicle, it's fine. Um, that's kinda where we were thinking with that, as opposed to doing a setback, we originally had like a thirty foot setback on there. Where we felt like that ended up being too restrictive on certain scenarios, so that's what we did with that. Um, and then, uh, for a new development, um, just like with the fence, when we have a new commercial property. Coming in, if they're showing a sign, if they're gonna have a fence, we ask that they show that on their site plan, so we'd ask the same thing for a gate. Um, but similarly with fences, if someone's wanting to put a gate up, uh, after the fact. Uh, we would treat that as a fence permit that we would take through our administrative process to approve. Um, that would require, um, the fire department's involvement in reviewing those a little different than a fire, uh, fence permit. Um, because, yes, in the, uh, when we're talking about that, the apparatus has to be wholly on site. Um, we're leaving that to our fire code officials to determine that, we're, as city planners and community development folks aren't gonna. Make that call on, does it fit or not, they know their apparatus, they know what, what works. So we'll be working with them to approve that stuff and give guidance on that. Um, so that really hits all the details of it, um, happy to answer questions.
So, nice job.
Thank you.
Great, um, eight A. We have an extra word in that sentence. I'm not sure if it's supposed to be different spelling, yeah, um, allowed on, provided they meet.
Yes, thank you.
I just didn't know if there's supposed to be another word in there or what, so just FYI, otherwise.
Yeah, should, shall be allowed, provided that they meet the following, yeah, gotcha.
Hey Luke, um, so, uh, could, could any private property then be gated?
Um. Could a resident, I, I approached this from a commercial standpoint, you're not like a single family.
Well, yeah, there's a, I have a question, I suppose, about that, like, could anybody? On a piece of private property, whether it be commercial or residential, say, I want a gate?
That, that was the intention, was to try to provide guidance for anyone that wanted to do this, how would they, how would we allow it? And if it meets those requirements, then yes, you can do that, if it doesn't, then no, you can't.
This kinda speaks to the commercial side, doesn't it?
Yes.
Okay. Um, any, so any commercial site that is privately owned could put up a security gate?
Correct.
Yeah, I don't like it.
Okay.
You wanna put a gate on your house?
Yeah. No, I just, um. Uh, you know. I would like for the people who want to have gates that really feel strongly about it. Um, I don't know, I don't know, something like a fee?
Sure.
You could put one on there. Um, but you need to do that, it'll cost you twenty thousand dollars to put that off. So that they really understand. Um. Like, they have to really want it.
Sure.
Because I want us to all be open.
Mm-hmm.
And accessible, and good neighbors with each other, and not start to go, this is mine, not yours. And so. I, I just, and I don't wanna like go up twenty-eight and see a bunch of gates of people saying, I don't want people in my parking lot.
Well, how do you do storage facilities?
Well, there, I don't know if, if, if there's certain things that could be amended, Brian, to, to include certain specific things where gates are common.
Or like, or, okay, yeah.
Yeah, you know what I'm saying, like, I, I'm not, there, there's certain things where gates have been used and, and. There is a very. I, I assume a very common sense case you can make for why they're necessary.
Like our work, our sports facilities, there's gotta be a time that it's closed or opened. A gate versus a door, or.
But, but the, these are on like parking lots and things like that.
That's right, that's what this is about.
Yeah.
In driving.
So it, it.
He has some pretty nice stores out there, a lot of their houses, that the gate looks beautiful, you know, it goes with the property.
I'm, 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 I'm not, I guess I'm not really talking about residential type stuff. I'm talking about in town. If everybody has the option to do that, and people start to think, you know what, I don't want anyone parking on, on this little thing I own. And maybe that's a thing that will never happen.
That's what the hearing, the audiologist, when they were here, that's what they asked for, they wanna be able to gate their parking lot.
And they wanna be able to gate it, cause they don't want anyone who's going into the businesses there to be able to use their property. And that's, I'm thinking, I don't wanna start doing that here in this town. I don't care, like, I don't want us to start doing that.
I was gonna say, a business that doesn't let you in is a short-lived business.
Well, it's, it's just not being a good member of the community. So. Like.
But their argument is that they have a lot of expensive equipment, uh, where in the parking lot, but.
Well, and, and so that's why I'm wondering again about like, that's great, yeah. It costs you twenty thousand dollars to get the permit to do that.
Or I can put up signs, this is private property, and it'll be towed if you're not doing business in my property, like Ingersoll. They get towed every time you park.
I'm not an expert on any of this, I realize. I just don't. I don't want to see a bunch of gates up. In public spaces. Because now people have the opportunity to do that, and they don't, they think, I want that wear and tear on my. Parking lot, or whatever it is, or I don't want those kind of people on my parking lot.
I think that particular case, there's something going on there at night. The people that use that building will need to be parked. And they can't get to come there, and it'd be, uh. How they get in there with the gates closed, I don't know, maybe they'll have some kind of card or something, I don't know.
I know the staff has worked hard on this, I, I, and.
But I think most people won't, I can see if parking gets to be. Limited in certain areas, where certain businesses not really dependent on people's. Whatever, whatever, if they feel comfortable to put it, to protect their property, I can see them do that. Potentially, or tow them if you're in the wrong spot, you have some of that right now out there, we, you know, we have reservations for mullets and.
Yeah, there's reserved spots for.
It's fine.
Uh, but, but, but you're not seeing a gate or things like that.
Yeah.
I think you get into private property rights issues. And then if you're gonna have joint use or mutual use of a parking lot, there's really something that has to be negotiated between the users.
Sure.
I mean, for us, uh, like the sports complex up there, or this, the field house, right? We're sure allowed to be able to use all the parking lots, we can get our hands on it in that area.
There's gates out at Mackinich, at least there used to be, I've been out there a really long time, right? There's gates out there that we gate off and prevent people from using that space, at least we did at some point, you know, so I. Yeah, so I guess I'm not, I mean, how does, how does that fit in? If we don't let John Q, business owner, say, this is my private property, I wanna protect it. And how, how do we justify protecting it?
That's a good question.
Our public safety, we have gates on that to keep people away from the equipment and the school buses and all of that. If I had a industrial thing out there. To protect, TMC doesn't have gates up there where they're out protecting their four hundred semis that are. Worth a fortune.
And I think if you would open up a business. And. Come to the business in the morning, on a Monday or on a morning, let's say it's a Saturday morning. And neighbor business. There's a bunch of cars that were left there overnight, and you know, you don't have very much parking in your lot now. That'd be, that's a problem.
Yeah, that'd be a problem regardless, for sure.
And that's, that's what this, I, I think that's what the hearing was trying to present.
And I don't disagree with you, right, the hearing center could put up signs and say, no overnight parking, you'll be towed at the owner's expense, right? I think that gives them. The ability to do that, however. I don't know that I feel, I mean, I don't, I don't like the idea either, I don't know that I feel like we have the ability. To tell people. That they can't, I don't know that I think we should have the ability to tell people that they can't, it's their private property. And this at least gives some guidance and some structure and some requirements for them to be able to do that.
I get that, Jack.
And for the safety aspects.
Want you to be open to get used to even coming there, even though you're not going there for, for particular purpose, but you just. Just get used to driving in the parking lot for whatever reason, and, uh, they don't wanna gate up there, you say, well, I don't know if I'm gonna go there, because I don't know if the gate's closed or not, but. Don't know what their hours are for whatever reason, but, uh, yeah, I, I just don't think we should be telling people that they can't.
Basically, if they decide to build a gate, we're just saying, hey, we want a nice looking gate there.
Right, and it has to be in conjunction with fire.
Right.
Right.
No con, no wires.
Well, thanks for chatting about it. I appreciate it, I really do.
Kaylin, have we received any oral written comments on this?
No.
So do we have any public comment? Anybody in the audience or online?
Motion?
Second.
Not yet.
Oh. Oh, we're still in the public hearing, sorry.
Public hearing. Uh, okay, hearing none, we'll go ahead and close public hearing at seven PM. Uh, item seven C. Is the first reading of an ordinance, amending code ordinances for City of Iowa to adopt zoning amendment related to gates on commercial property. So we just had a public hearing for this zoning amendment. Uh, Luke, you have anything to add?
Nothing else.
Write any other discussion from councils.
Back.
Alright, motion by Livingston, second, Livingston, seconded by Cool, uh, any further discussions? Hearing none. Hearing none, Kalen, would you please call it all?
Councilmember Cool?
Yes.
Livingston?
Yeah.
Minneke?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Motion carries, item seven V is resolution authorizing and approving a loan and disbursement agreement, uh, and providing for the issuance and securing the payment of five million nine hundred seventy thousand dollars water revenue bonds, series twenty twenty-five A, so this is approval to authorize the issuance and secure the payment for the city's Central Iowa Water Works member buy-in costs, uh, through the state revolving loan fund, Iowa Finance Authority. This also secures additional water capacity for the community. Gene, what do you got?
Um, you've summed it up very well, we had a public hearing on this, um, we've had a couple, um, other proceedings on this. Just, uh, let you know the check will be issued and it'll be on the next claims list, it'll be a large amount, just under six million. Um, and we will close on the nineteenth, uh, the check will be mailed the same day.
All right. Questions from council?
I'd do it.
Second. It's pretty cool that we're a member of all of us.
Yeah, I agree. Okay, so I got motion by Livingston, seconded by Brown, any further discussion or public comment? Kalen, would you please call it all?
Councilmember Minneke?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Cool?
Yes.
Livingston?
Yes.
All right, that motion carries, item seven E is a resolution authorizing and approving a loan and disbursement agreement, uh, and providing for the issuance and securing the payment of four million nine hundred twenty-five thousand, uh, dollars worth of water revenue bonds, series twenty twenty-five B, so this is approval, uh, to authorize the issuance and secure the payment for the water tower loan through the state revolving loan fund, Iowa Finance Authority, Gene?
This is similar to the previous proceedings, we had the public hearing October second. The actual, uh, project cost is just a little over six million, we are borrowing four point nine for it. Um, it'll be a little bit different, we will draw down as the project progresses instead of one full payment. Uh, this also closes on the nineteenth of December.
All right. Any public comment?
Motion.
Okay.
Second.
Motion by Brown, seconded by Livingston, any further discussion? Kalen, would you call roll?
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Cool?
Yes.
Livingston, yes, Minneke?
Yes.
All right, motion carries, item seven F is resolution initiating a zoning amendment pering the proposal to the Norwalk Planning and Zoning Commission and setting a public hearing regarding the proposal to amend the Brody's Landing Plan Unit Development regarding bulk regulations for decks, land use parcels, C, D, and E. I'm gonna let Luke go with this one.
Yep, so in the Brody's Landing, uh, development, we did a P U D, so the, uh, lot regulations and everything are not standard borough zoning code. Um, when we've applied that rear setback to some of the patios that have been, been built, specifically when somebody wants to do steps off of it, um, we tend to have to deny people because their steps and stuff are extending into their rear setback. Um, so we've gotten a request from the developer, who still is kind of the main owner of the development in the HOA, to make this change to lessen the rear setback to ten feet for decks and patios, so we can accommodate some of those, uh, accessory uses on people's property out there.
Would this have a retroactive effect for the people that have already applied and been turned down?
Yeah, we would, they would just fill a new permit out and we'd let them do that, yep.
Any public comment? I would entertain a motion. Motion by Livingston, seconded by Minneke, any further discussion?
We're just referring, we're not writing anything.
Right.
All right, uh, Kalen, would you please call roll?
Councilmember Brown?
Yes.
Cool?
Yes.
Livingston?
Yes.
Minneke?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
All right, motion carries, item seven G is resolution approving and authorizing execution and delivery of the third amendment amended and restated agreement for the Des Moines Metropolitan Waste Reclamation Authority, that's the W R A, uh, consenting to the issuance of bonds by the Board of the W R A for the purpose of construction improvements under the terms of said agreement and related matters, so the agenda statement created by Lindsay and Jim provides a pre-conference of overview of the changes. Uh, our city manager was part of a metro managers group that heard a presentation about these changes also. Jim, I'm gonna let you take it over from here.
Well, it is a, a rewrite of the, um, original twenty eighty agreement that we have in place. Really, there aren't significant changes to it, it, it does change the amount of the bonding ability of the board. Uh, we, we are a member of that board, uh, it's an equal vote on, between all the members under, for, um, matters that, you know, frankly, aren't real important. It's a weighted vote for, uh, some of those more important votes. What I mean by weighted is clearly Des Moines is a member of the group too, West Des Moines is a member, but it's, it's based upon uh, populations and things like that, so as a result of, you know, we don't have a big proportion on it, but once again, it's good to be a member of these groups and all the, all the member communities, uh, are voting for that.
Great.
Motion.
Okay, any other discussion from council? I've got a motion by Brown, seconded by Livingston, any public comment? Kalen, would you please call it all?
Councilmember Cool?
Yes.
Livingston?
Yes.
Minneke?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
All right, motion carries, item seven H is a resolution approving an amendment to the Parkland Dedication Agreement with Signature Companies LLC for the Shadow Creek Plan Unit Development, so the original Parkland Agre- uh, Dedication Agreement had some timelines in regards to when the Parkland would be turned over to the city, uh, the development isn't progressing as quickly as they originally planned, so this resolution will add two years to the agreed-to date, setting it to December first, twenty twenty-seven. Luke?
That's the gist of it.
All right.
Got a question?
Yeah.
Um. Why don't they just leave it to us now?
We, uh, and, and I wrote this amendment to it, it did expire, uh, December first of this year. Uh, it is the park, it is a park at the back, so we don't have a development up to that. Uh, we do have this recorded and everything at the county level, so I am, I am confident that our claim is, is, is well, well-secured on it, uh, so the reason why I don't take it now is, once we take it, we have to maintain it, we have liabilities to it. We wouldn't be able to access it otherwise, uh, we were hoping, originally, they said that the second plat would be touching upon this, and that's why we had the agreement this way, because I think Councilmember Livingston at that point, I was pointing out that he wanted to make sure that we got it as quick as possible because we didn't like to wait for our parks till the very last time, so, uh, but they ended up plating a little bit differently where what they thought was gonna be the second plats, I think they made what was gonna be the second into like the first half and the second, second half. The second half has not gotten down to the park yet, uh, but yeah, it also, it very much has to do with expenses too, because once we have it, we gotta maintain it, we gotta improve it, everything else, and, uh, and then it's just not ready to be. Surveyed out, marked off, um, in the P U D, in the preliminary plat, and that's recorded at the county level too, showing on.
Discussion? Any public comment? I'd entertain a motion to approve it.
Motion, second.
Motion by Cool, segmented by Minneke, Kalen, would you call roll?
Councilmember Livingston?
Yes.
Minneke?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Cool?
Yes.
All right, motion carries, item seven I, it's the second reading of an ordinance repealing and replacing chapter thirty-five, Fire Department of the New York City Code, this change is being done to update language to make it more accurately represent how the department functions today. Chief, you got anything else?
Nothing to add.
All right, any discussion or questions from the council or public comment?
Second.
Okay, motion by Livingston, seconded by Brown, Kalen, would you call it all?
Councilmember Minneke?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Cool?
Yes.
Livingston?
Yes.
All right, motion carries, item seven J is an appeal hearing regarding a vicious dog determination, so let's start out with Jim giving us a summary of the codes and ordinance regarding vicious dogs.
Okay, uh, this is what this is, is there has been a finding by our chief police that, uh, there's a vicious dog that exists, and what the council is doing is, the council is basically acting as an appellate body here. And, uh, I'm, what I'm referring to also is, is I had Luke put this up on the board too, so you can see exactly what I'm talking about. But, uh, according to our code, this is the final appeal, uh, you know, part of the due process on the vicious dog thing is that the council can hear and ma- make a determination of whether they are going to, uh, approve the binding or not approve the finding, uh, basically, the city council acting as appellate body, determine whether substantial evidence of course, police chief's designation of this animal is a vicious animal, it's under chapter fifty-eight of our code. Uh, coun- council members must make findings on each applicable standard below, the city must prove each relevant criteria by proponent of the evidence. Kind of put this more in a jury instruction type thing, just to kind of organize your thoughts on it. Uh, council should review testimony of any witnesses in front of it, reports and exhibits, that's gonna be presented by police chief and anybody else that wants to present. Any photographs, uh, police records, uh, statements, any statements that the owners of, of their animals have made or other relevant evidence, and really ultimately what you're gonna find is, if you see, if Luke, you could scroll down, there's an instruction one, this is based on fifty-eight point oh-two-nine B, the findings of the police chief was that this dog was vicious uh, as a result of, uh, chapter fifty-nine, fifty-eight point oh-two-nine B and nine C. What nine is, is the definition of vicious animal, and, uh, there are five different definitions of what could be a vicious animal, two of those applies in this case, uh, that the findings were based upon. And those two are what the council will be reviewing today, so, structure one is multiple bites causing injury, and basically, the question the council's gonna have to answer is, has the city proved that the animal bitten a person or domesticated animal more than once causing injury? Uh, if the answer is yes, then that meets the definition on there, uh, under the code, and the dog would be vicious. Second instruction, does it have a history of attacking, approaching in an aggressive manner? That's what's determined whether the evidence shows either a history of attacking, chasing, or approaching a person, a domestic animal, or a yield conveyance. Uh, in a, in apparent attack, attitude of attack on any street sidewalk, public privacy, property attack means approaching in a threatening manner, disposition to fight, bite, or injure, or actually biting or causing injury, or a known propensity, tendency, or disposition to attack without provocation causing injury to otherwise, or otherwise threatening the safety of humans or domestic animals. Then it's gonna ask to make you a finding on that, at the council, you find, yes, the animal has demonstrated history of attacking, chasing, or approaching in threatening manner. Yes, the animal has a known propensity, tendency to attack without provocation, threaten safety, or your other alternatives, no, the evidence does not establish the conduct described, uh, and then, and then finally, once those two determinations are made, then the final determination's gonna be, uh, whether the council finds the animal meets that definition of vicious animal under chapter fifty-eight or not, uh, that's basically the scope of your appeal, so I go over it now on what you should be considering, probably after all the, everything is, is presented there, we'll get the chance to speak, then we'll kind of go over this again, then ultimately it'll be in a resolution format when.
Could we get, uh, sorry, could we get a printed copy of those instead of having to rely on Luke to scroll down?
Okay.
Good. Jim, okay then.
Thank you.
Want me to hit print? I've got it all set up.
Me too.
Okay. I am the la- last page of those instructions, they both talk about credibility and evidence weight, that you can look through and just, you have a right to weigh the credibility of witnesses, consistency of their statements, documentary evidence, uh, whether evidence is contradicted or corroborated through the hearing, and then also, it's gonna be, another thing is whether they attacks, if you find that there were some that were provoked or unprovoked, uh, and the council's just basically gonna answer those questions, that's the scope of the appeal. It's not whether alternative penalties, alternative charges, or any other matters, it's a matter of whether those defined areas are.
Yeah, that makes sense. Okay. You okay moving forward before?
Yes.
That back, okay.
What's that? You want me to order a hearing and, uh, hearing rules? You want me to just do it?
Why don't you go ahead and do it?
Hi, it's Greg Staples, the police chief's staff. Uh, before we get started, uh, Jim and I collaborated on a previous, um, uh, vicious dog ordinance appeal and created rules for the hearing. Um, the time, uh, the order, order will be, the city attorney's giving you app, um, discussion on the code, I'll present to you what, uh, evidence I've collected. Um, afterwards, uh, witnesses can, can speak, I know there's at least one victim here. There may be more, either online or in the audience, um, the dog owner will be allowed to speak and present witnesses. Um, all statements made by any presenter of information shall be directed to the council. Individuals parties involved are not entitled to question each other. Throughout the process, the members of council and mayor may ask questions, request additional information, and make statements. We, um, dog owner is entitled to have an attorney, but it's not required. Rules of evidence and civil procedure, court rules will not apply. Mayor Phillips will be in charge of the hearing and will make maintained decorum. Uh, those are rules created by the city attorney at a previous, uh, hearing similar to this. Are they effective tonight?
This is there.
Okay, any questions before I get started?
No.
Okay. Um, I'm gonna give you a timeline of, um, several incidents involving a dog named Rusty, who's owned by Ann Bechtel, uh, who lives on Nantucket Place, uh, in the town home at the brownstones around Billy O. Phillips Park.
I, I do have a question about this part, um, just because you've, uh, we have received all of the information you're about to go over.
Right.
And I think we're taking this pretty seriously, right? Um, and so, I'm wondering, is it, is it good for chief to, does he need to go through everything again? Just so that everyone can hear it?
I think it's important for him to brief everything, I don't think he needs to, I mean, there's quite a bit of material as far as reading it.
Yeah.
For wine, I think.
And we've.
His report that was, was provided.
Yeah, it was a good report.
Incorporated in the.
It's very.
Hearing, uh, so I don't expect that in depth, but I think the outline that it has is going to be.
Great.
Not, not that.
Thanks.
It's my, it was my intention to speak on each date, um, and read excerpts of emails and police reports of the pertinent information on that particular incident, uh, and answer questions if there were.
Great.
Okay, um, it's important to note that, um, in August of twenty twenty-four, the third reading of a revised vicious dog ordinance was approved by council, um, and that provision changed the definition of what a vicious animal is to what we're speaking about today, and I re- bring that up because one of the bites, the first bite from June twenty twenty-four occurred prior to the current ordinance, and you will see that in September of twenty twenty-four, there was a, a bite that occurred. And I determined that at that time Rusty was not vicious, according to the code. And I did that because after speaking with Jim, um, the bite did not really meet the definition of serious injury, um, although it did require two stitches, and there's a picture of that injury in the packet. Um, and it did not meet the criteria of two bites, because the first bite occurred before the ordinance was recreate, was revised, and the attorney did not feel it was appropriate to count a bite that occurred prior to the person having knowledge that two bites uh, would, uh, trigger the ordinance definition, so, with that.
Um, that seems hard. Two bites is two bites.
Um, on June sixth, uh, Rusty, uh, bit the back of the thigh area, um, of Kyle Smith as he was walking with friends around Billy O. Phillips Park. Um, I contacted Kyle, told him that he was, had the ability to come to tonight's hearing and prevent it, present information. He was unable to do so, he emailed me this morning, I believe you have that email in your packets, or it was placed on your desk.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and I'm just gonna read a couple sentences from the middle of that, uh, his words describing what happened that night. Uh, the dog noticed us walking in the distance and instantly started barking, growling, and running towards all three of us. Uh, Kyle was walking with two friends. This was no playful attitude whatsoever, as the dog ran up to us, we all turned our back to the dog, not trying to agitate it anymore or even put up any defense. While my back was turned, the dog decided to bite the back of my thigh. While my back was turned, the dog decided to bite the back of my thigh totally unprovoked. That particular incident, uh, the next day Kyle called the police, an officer responded. Uh, after speaking to the officer, no police report was filed, the only um. Documentation we have of the incident, um, prior to uh, me speaking to Kyle in depth later. Uh, was a computer printout. So there was no police report filed at that time. On September eighth, uh, twenty twenty four, Rusty bit the leg of Andrea Wright while she was riding her bike around Billy O Phillips Park. Ann Bechtel, Rusty's owner, admitted to write that she knew Rusty didn't like bikes or cyclists and was trying to catch Rusty before Wright. Got near the dog, Rusty also lunged at Wright's husband when he arrived to pick up Miss Wright and I believe that they are here. I can read her statements, um, now or she could speak, whatever's the pleasure of counsel.
Well, not both, if she wants to speak, I think she should be able to speak, if she doesn't, then I think you can oversee.
Everything we submitted in the email that we sent is what we.
Okay.
Excuse me, Steve, and you're Ms. Could you say your name for the record?
Andrea Wright.
What's your address?
Uh, thirteen twenty four Green Hills Drive in Rock Island.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, then I will read a excerpt from an email she sent the council. Two days ago. Uh, as I slowed to carefully pass, one of the dogs came around the back of my bike and bit into my lower leg, shaking it before releasing. I was forced to stop, dismount my bike and wait in shock and pain. The female owner immediately approached, apologized and stated several times. That she knew her dog did not like, did not like bikes or cyclists. Uh, that was from the email she, uh, Miss Wright sent to council. Um, during the police investigation of that incident, she provided a written statement to the officers and I'll read a few sentences from that. I saw a woman running down the sidewalk toward the dogs and I slowed a little bit, unsure if the dogs were fighting each other or even lost. And then I passed them. The one dog came around the back of my bike and bit into my lower leg. And what felt like shook it and then released, I was able to come to a stop and get off my bike. The female owner came up right away to see if I was okay and to apologize. For the dog and stated several times that she knew the dog didn't like bikes or cyclists and then said she was running to grab the dog before I passed it. Um, in your pocket, there is a picture of the injuries that Miss Wright, uh, suffered, uh, I'll hold it up. Case you are able to see it. Readily on your computers. On July nineteenth, oh, on September tenth, um, I informed Ann Beck to via cell or via via phone call. That any additional biting incidents would meet the definition of vicious and that Rusty would be declared as vicious if it happened again. During, um, Miss Spectal's appeal hearing that with me, I talked to her about this and she remembered receiving that phone call. Um, that the second, a an additional bite would trigger the definition of vicious under the ordinance. On July nineteenth, Rusty bit the leg of Liam Gary while he was riding his bike at Billy O Phillips Park. That incident was not reported to the police department at the time that it had occurred.
Sorry.
Uh, July nineteenth, uh, twenty twenty five, excuse me. Uh, the first bite, June twenty twenty four, second, September twenty twenty four, and July twenty twenty five. Liam Gary, uh, was bitten by Rusty on July nineteenth, twenty twenty five. His parents did not call the police and the police were unaware of it until, uh, October, uh, when an additional bite happened. Um, so I learned of this. After the, what was considered, what is the fourth bite, which I thought was the third. This is the third bite, so chronologically, I'm just going to do this now. Um, on July nineteenth at around eight P M, um, Liam was on his bike. Rusty, uh, was on a retractable leash being held by Ann. Um, she let Rusty approach, um, and then bit, and then Rusty bit Liam. Specifically what, uh, Liam's mother, Megan Gary, said was. Uh, instead of keeping Rusty by her side and let Rusty run the leash, meaning let it, uh. Uh, pull the retractable leash out. And he attacked, uh, Liam on the left calf and left butt cheek. He has and he's now has two pretty good sized scars on his leg, that is according to Liam's father. Uh, I called, um, Megan Gary, Liam's mother and informed her she could participate in tonight's hearing, I don't know that she's here or online. Then on October fourth, twenty twenty five. Rusty bit the arm of a young girl named River Hollingshead while she was riding her bike at Billy O Phillips Park. Uh, the injury is described as minor bruising and puncture marks. Uh, Ann told River that Rusty was good now and then approached her with Rusty, Rusty then lunged at River and bit her. The police report from that incident, um, was written by Officer Dirksen. Uh, and a few sentences from it are, River indicated that Ann said her dog was good now. When Ann and the dog later identified it as Rusty approached her while River was riding her bike. River stated that Rusty then lunged at her and grabbed her by her arm and pulled her off her bike. Officer Dirksen then says, I looked at River's arm and saw she had bruising and a few puncture marks on her arm. Uh, Nicole, that's River's mother, indicated that they had never had any problems with the dog unless it was around bicycles, bikes. There is a picture, few pictures of Rivers injuries, uh, in the packet. I'll hold them up so you can see them, uh, she has a puncture mark on the back of her arm. And another indentation on the front of her arm. If you'd like me to hand them to you, I I will. That's a synopsis of the four incidents that, um. That led to my declaration of viciousness. So on October fourth, the fourth bite happened on October sixth, as part of my duties as chief of police, I reviewed. Um, binding incident from October fourth, uh, I went to our bite spreadsheet and. I also remembered that there was one from a year earlier, um, and I began, um, preparing. A vicious dog declaration, at which time I learned about, um, River, um, Liam Gary's injury and. I prepared the letter, uh, declaring Rusty vicious and had that hand delivered to Ann. Um, on October sixth.
Can I ask you a couple of questions?
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, how big is Rusty?
I've not met Rust, I'm going to guess fifty pounds, fifty sixty?
And I'm just trying to understand the mechanics of. How? So not a small dog, so when the dog approaches a child. Probably not any effort to bite a child in the arm, given how tall a child is, I mean, doesn't have to jump up?
I don't believe so, a kid, a s- a younger child on a bicycle, um, wouldn't be towering. Uh, Liam Gary was described as standing on his bike, so I'm assuming he was standing on the pedals. Um, and it was bitten in the lower leg and in the butt.
Right. Okay, I'm just trying to get it to understanding of. Right, I understand the people who say the dog kind of ran at them and lunged. Trying to understand from both Liam and River, it sounds like the owner approached. The individual with the dog or let the dog approach the individual. And then, so it doesn't sound like there was any charging involved, just sounds like it was an approach and then the dog bit. Um, so I'm just trying to understand if there was jumping and biting or just.
My understanding, those two instances, as you pointed out, that Ann Rusty's owner approached the children with the dog. And it. Finished the approach quicker than Ann intended and.
Thank you for questioning.
That's the way I understand it. So I, uh, informed Ann that she was or that Rusty was being declared vicious, um. By phone call and letter, um. That was on October sixth, um, the code gives a dog owner three days. Three business days to, uh, file an appeal if they so choose. Um, Ann decided that she wanted to, uh, or or obtain a vicious dog license and came to city hall. With the intent to get a vicious dog license, um, which involves, um, having an out, having a, um. Having a, um. A, a.
Private.
I can't think of the term. Proper enclosure, having a proper enclosure, um, and speaking to the city clerk about her proper enclosure and how that would get inspected. City clerk realized that this was going to be difficult because Ann lives in a town home and doesn't have any. Real private property outside her home where she can put a proper enclosure for a dog. The code also prevents a vicious animal to leave an owner's property. Uh, unless it is on its way to, uh, vet or through a medical appointment, so. Um, it would be impossible for Ann to walk Rusty to use the bathroom outside. Because there's no private property that she owns for that to happen. Um, so getting a vicious dog license wasn't really an option for her based on where she lives. So, uh, the clerk and I talked about that and I called Ann and told her. That she couldn't get a vicious dog license unless she agreed to never let Rusty out of the house unless she was going. To, uh, vet appointment, um, so instead she appealed. Um, she filed the appeal in the proper time, uh, her appeal note is in the packet, uh, we held an appeal hearing. On October twenty eighth, um, during that appeal hearing, um. She described how she got Rusty, rescued him from a, uh, terrible situation in Missouri. Um, brought him back to, uh, Norwalk, um, and. Talked about how she was trying to currently get him trained, uh, she admitted that she didn't get any training for Rusty. Until I declared him vicious. She admitted at that time that she knew, she recalled my, uh, warning phone call to her. About what would happen if there was an additional bite after the one from September twenty twenty four. Um, so after the appeal hearing, um, on the twenty ninth, the next day, I decided to uphold my original. That declaration of viciousness because of the multiple bites, um, and also because of, um, a history of chasing, approaching. Mostly because of the, um, wield conveyance portion of that. So, once I declared, uh, that I was not going to change my opinion or my original declaration and she was informed of that. Um, she filed her second appeal to city council, also within the designated timeframe, um, which brought us to today. Uh, are there any questions for the?
Jim, I got a question.
Okay.
So our purpose here tonight is just to adjudicate whether or not this situation. That is not the determining remedy.
That is correct. I will say that if the dog is, if the declaration of viciousness is upheld tonight.
I don't, if you're going to tell us the remedy, don't tell us the remedy. Should make it, I I'm not trying to cut you off, but you should make a decision without knowing.
Yes, you're right. Okay, anything else for me?
Thanks, Drew.
Okay.
Thank you, thank you.
I know that, uh, Ann Beck was in the room and I believe she has people that she wants to speak for her also.
Yeah, go ahead.
My name is Ann Bechtel and yes, very nice to meet you all, um. I am Rusty's owner and I apologize again profusely for for what happened. I do not downplay, I totally understand the code and the ordinance. I do not downplay one bit of any pain that he caused whatsoever. I take full responsibility and yes, I did rescue Rusty from a terrible situation. Not fully knowing his previous history before I got him. Um, when I did so, I just thought my love would be enough for him. Unfortunately, he is triggered by bicycles. I did try everything possible to fix the situation, I tried shock collars, I tried. I tried multiple things to to remedy the situation, um, unfortunately, when I first got him, he was not triggered by bicycles. I was walking him one day and a kid came by on a bicycle and hit him, ran right into him and that's what triggered him. So anytime a bicycle went by. He would lunge, bark, whatever, was afraid of bicycles. Um, unfortunately, when Andrea's situation, um, I had him off of his leash playing with another dog that he hadn't seen in a while. Again, my fault because, and I take full responsibility that I had him off leash, when she went driving by. He went running after her, so. Again, I'm not going to downplay any of it whatsoever. The first incident, um, I believe the gentleman's name was Kirk, I'm going to say and defend my dog.
Kyle, oh, Kyle. About the same one.
Yes, the very first, um, incident, um, I was trying to do some training with him, it was eleven o'clock at night. We were right in front of my house, three strangers came walking by. Rusty went and yes, he aggressively barked at them, he was defending his house and he did not bite that person. He jumped up and his nail scratched the back of his leg, it was not a bite and it did not get reported until the next day. Liam. To be honest, I really don't recall that situation, but again, I'm not going to deny it, I'm not going to downplay it. Because I do want to take full responsibility for my dog. I take responsibility because I set him up for failure. I didn't know, I hadn't owned a dog in thirty years. I rescued this dog, I was on this website for two and a half years looking for a doodle dog to rescue, I found him. I rescued him and I thought I was doing the right thing. And if I could have Patty come up and maybe help attest for me, um, I set my dog up for failure. And again, I will take full responsibility, by all means, he does meet those vicious codes, I didn't give him the proper training. I set him up with a harness and a retractable leash. And that's not going to do it for a dog.
Does anybody have any questions?
Or?
No, right now.
How, yeah, I, how big is your dog?
He weighs fifty five pounds.
And so you say you don't remember this, did I understand you correctly, you don't remember the situation with Liam?
With Liam, correct.
Um, tell me about the situation as you want to recall it to be with River, please.
Okay, so we were, I was actually getting ready to go to bed because I had to be up at three A M. So there was a bunch of neighbors that were out and we were talking and we were in kind of in the middle of our circle grassy area. And, uh. I had Rusty on his leash, she wanted to pet him and I was like. Reluctant to let him go over there and she rode her bike right up to him and he bit her in the arm. As far as the lunging at people and chasing them, I mean, he chased Andrea Dunn, that was the one, but everything else and. I had him on the leash, I was trying to be a responsible dog owner and. He just, that quick, just got to her and nipped her in the arm as soon as she was off of her bike. He was fine, nothing, it definitely was a trigger with bicycles. So since then, since all of this happened and shame on me once again, I will take full responsibility. Um, I always meant to take him to Patty to get trained, I procrastinated. And this pushed it over the edge, I did take him out to Patty to be trained and he, I have a video of him with bicycles riding by. And he just sits there and watches him go by.
And when did you do that?
When did we start training?
It was in October.
In October, shortly after.
October of twenty twenty five or twenty twenty four?
Twenty twenty five, it was shortly after the, the River incident.
So, the do- the, the police, as I understand it, advised you that if there was another bite back. So the, the, the police, as I understand it, advised you that if there was another bite back a year ago.
Correct.
That there would be the declaration.
Correct.
And you didn't do anything for a year per training. Just want to make sure I understand. I'm not accusing. I just.
Right. Yes.
Ma'am, you don't dispute any of the events that the chief presented?
Pardon me?
You don't dispute that any of the events occurred that the chief presented?
I do, I do dispute the first event because I, my dog definitely did not bite that gentleman. He scratched the back of his leg. And I believe when I did get a phone call and the police said. I, I, it, it just looks like a scratch. I'm like, yeah, he did not bite that person. So I definitely do dispute that.
Good, thank you. Was the second one, was that the two stitches?
The second one was, I'm.
That, that was the two stitches.
Well, technically, the first one under the new ordinance.
You, are you fearful at all of a civil lawsuit? You've shown intent. You know your dog is willing to bite. You even chased after it as, as you described yourself, knowing what was going to happen. You are intentionally owning a dog that is going to harm someone and has harmed someone. Four times now. Aren't you fearful of a civil lawsuit?
It didn't even cross my mind, to be honest with you.
Not counting just being.
I did.
Good to.
I did pay for medical bills.
I'm not talking about that. I'm talking about pain and anguish. And what's going to happen two years from now? Is this going to happen again? It's been pretty consistent.
It's not, it's not going to happen again because I now have set him up for success and I have taken him to training.
Thought you had done that before, by simple love. You will get your eyesued out if you did keep the dog. You know that going forward, the next bite. I just, I cannot understand why someone, I grew up with a dog named Rusty. If that dog had bitten two people, my dad would have had that dog put down. Because of the fear and the pain and anguish it causes other families.
I get that and I understand.
I don't think so, but.
I do, I do. And every day I walked him, I was fearful and I made sure I had his leash and I.
What it can do and you will do it. That's why you're fearful.
I, in the past, yes, but since I have gotten him training, I am no longer fearful at all. I, I do not doubt his ability to listen. I am not fearful at all. I know my dog and I know what he's capable of and I know the training that he's been given and I know how to handle him properly. I was not, I was not equipped. But now I am. I have the knowledge and the experience to make sure that this never happens again.
Any other questions?
Would you like to meet Rusty?
No.
To see how he behaves?
No.
Because you came through. So I, I'm Patty Lance.
I'm Patty Lance and I own Patty Alpampered Pets in Pearl, Iowa. So I'm a dog trainer. We do boarding. We do all things dog. Have been doing this for over ten years. Anne came to me after the incident, so I wasn't aware of any incidents that happened prior to her coming to me and saying, I need to train my dog. And she came to me in tears, she says, again, and I saw a dog that came harness with retractable leash. Okay, and in my opinion, my professional opinion, this is not adequate to handle a dog that might bite somebody or any dog. Okay, any dog that has, can be out here and that, you know, is making their own decisions, dog decisions. Okay, when dogs make decisions on their own, it's legal for them to jump, bark, bite, dig, you know, chew, destroy things and to kill. That's a dog decision, okay? So me as a trainer, when we have dogs in society, they can't do that. They have to be good citizens. So what I train is dogs to be good citizens. So I train respect first. Okay, they have to have respect. All right, if a dog doesn't have respect, they don't look to the owner or their handler for leadership. They make their own decisions. But if they have, if you have respect from your dog and they do look to you then for leadership, then you make the decisions and they follow your lead. So ninety percent, I've, I've taken dogs, vicious dogs off of death row that were scheduled to be euthanized because they bit their kid in the face or whatever. And they would call me and say, is there anything, I don't want to euthanize our dog, is there anything that you can do to help? Okay, and I said, well, you know, you have to turn this completely around. And typically when I go into a situation and as with Anne, they don't have control over their dog. They don't have respect. Okay, so when I train, this is, my, my class is obedience class, but it is more like boot camp for dogs. Okay, because I feel like, I have multiple dogs. I have a pack of dogs, so, but, and, and we do public outings all the time.
Do you have small children running around these dogs, these?
Yes, I had grandchildren. They grew up with grandchildren, so.
I'm not sure why.
Well, it's okay.
I mean, I think that it would be helpful if you would focus on this dog and not all.
Right.
Yes, thank you.
Circle back to.
Okay, so yeah, so when she came to me with Rusty, he didn't respect her. He didn't look to her for leadership. You know, I could tell she loved him very much, but love, you know, is great, but you have to do tough love. Okay, in the beginning with a dog to get respect, so you have to love them from up here. And a lot of times when people, they have a big heart when they rescue, they love them from down here. Okay, so that puts the dog in charge. It makes the dog, you know, and they give the dog everything because they want to, you know, make the dog have a better life than it had. So they give the dog everything. Well, to a dog, that's weakness.
Patty, is. I, I think I understand the theory. Is the end that you have trained Rusty not to do this anymore?
We have trained Rusty not to do this and we've even exposed him to bike trails and bikes to desensitize him. And you know, there's a leave it command that we do, you know, and when they respect that, leave it, that means it's off limits.
Okay.
And so he has been through this training course. And he continues to come to training. Like we have a, a day camp academy that he comes to to make sure that it, it's followed up on and he's consistent with the training.
Okay.
So. That's what I want to say. She does have him colored properly now. He can't get to somebody. And she knows how to come in between somebody if somebody does approach. And I can tell you this, I've, I've seen a lot of vicious dogs at this point, you know, and I understand what he did prior and I'm not refusing any of that, but to me, I look at this dog, he's not a vicious dog. Okay, he was a dog triggered, a hurting instinct by a bike. That's what triggered it. We worked on that, you know, it was a mistake. He made, he made a dog decision.
Called him a vicious dog before training?
If I would have known of, and she did tell me of the incidents that he, he was biting and she had to get him trained. I've seen.
Would you have called him a vicious dog before he was trained?
Okay, so when I met, I can, I can only attest to what I met Rusty and he came to me. He was not, he never offered to bite me one time and I did challenge him.
Okay, thank you.
So in the meantime, I have put my townhouse on the market. I don't want to leave the Norwalk community, but if my dog is going to continue to be deemed a vicious animal and without being allowed to take him out to the bathroom and everything, I mean, so I literally put my dog in the car in the garage and go outside the city limits or take him to the dog park or someplace I know or to my daughter's house or down to Patty's place somewhere to let him go to the bathroom. Because I'm determined that I am not going to get rid of my dog because he rescued me just as much as I rescued him. And I know you probably don't understand that, but I do believe that dogs, just like people, can all be rehabilitated. And again, I don't want to leave the Norwalk town. I like it here. I've been here for four and a half years. But I do want to sell my townhouse. I want to have a fenced-in backyard. So my dogs can run and play and have a good upbringing and, you know. It's sad. I understand the code. Again, I respect everything, but I'm just asking that somehow this could be turned so I can actually live my life now that my dog's properly trained.
Thanks, Sam.
Thank you. Oh, yeah.
I, can I, I have a follow-up question. There are any requirements in the code that bites be reported to the police in order to be counted as a bite? A qualifying bite?
I don't believe the code says that specifically, no.
I think once determined vicious, if it was kept in town, licensed and confined, I think there's a duty to report that at one point, but the insurance, there is not a duty.
Okay, just wanted to clarify.
I will say I'm disappointed that we did not include the first bite simply due to the change in, in ordinance. I think that's one of those things where we're going strictly for the letters and not the intent. We're just trying to find dogs that bite. Period.
Yeah, okay. Anybody else want to talk? Council have any other questions?
I think if we go back to those instructions, that's probably the easiest way. What I would expect is to probably, we got one, two, three, three findings here and then there's a resolution that kind of summarizes that. And under the code, it, it does, you know, the resolution then requires, if it's upheld, if the police chief's decision is upheld, that the that the individual be required to follow the requirements of chapter fifty-eight. One would be to either license. No, no, this is a required finding for the council.
But we didn't have anything to do with the consequence.
Yes, but, but the code says that other than fine, if it's upheld, well, then the order of the council upholding it shall include in order to follow that.
Whether or not it's upheld. I don't think that we should be influenced by what the punishment might be when we decide whether or not it should be upheld.
Okay.
I absolutely agree. Then we have to do the next step, but.
Okay, I'm okay with that. Okay, well then why don't we go ahead and go back to those instructions. Number one, has the city proved that the animal has bit, has bitten a person or domesticated animal more than once causing injury?
I believe that.
Yes.
Yes. Yeah, I believe so.
Even if you discount the first one that she, that was outside the new code that she says was a scratch. If you discount that one, if you, even if you discount Rivers, which was apparently very insignificant, there are still three that are significant.
That's a big roll call vote on that then.
Okay.
Name then, yes or no?
Okay.
Aren't we just, are we just okay staples?
Yeah, but this is the findings.
All right, go ahead. Kayla, would you call, roll on that?
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Cool?
Yes.
Livingston?
Yes.
Minneke?
Yes.
The next instruction. Has the council determined that this animal has a history of attacking, chasing or approaching a person? A domestic animal or a wield conveyance in an apparent attitude of attack on a street sidewalk, public property, public or private property?
Yes.
Or, or it could be B, it could be A or B, right?
Yes. A or B. Yep, Kayla, would you call roll on that one?
Uh, councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Brown?
Turn it, I'm sorry. There's.
Yeah, that.
There's two yeses.
Yes, so we can have.
Yes, you can do either one.
I, I know, but just a general roll call doesn't.
Well, I'm, I'm looking at, we're doing it on the, on A first, we'll do B next.
Well, let's do A first.
Thank you for.
Okay.
Uh, councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Cool?
Yes.
Livingston?
Yeah.
Minneke?
Yes.
And B, does the animal have a known propensity, tendency or disposition to attack, provocation, causing injury or otherwise threatening the safety of humans or domestic animals?
Councilmember Baker?
What am I answering?
B.
Yes.
B.
Yes.
Either of those apply.
Oh, no, that'd be yes.
Baker said yes.
Yes. Baker said yes.
Yes.
Uh, Brown?
Yes.
Cool?
Yes.
Livingston?
Yes.
Minneke?
Overall determination. That, I'm really thinking you vote for that. The answer would be yes, because the council has already determined those two things. Yeah, so. Well, that's the council's findings. So I think next thing on would just be a resolution affirming the police chief's determination that a animal has vicious under chapter fifty-eight of Norwalk municipal code.
Okay, so we would need a motion, need to make a motion to confirm the police chief's decision to declare Rusty.
That's right.
Okay, I got a motion by Baker. Second by Livingston. Kayla, would you call roll?
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Cool?
Yes.
Livingston?
Yes.
Minneke?
Yes.
Right, motion carries. I think rescuing the, the dog is a wonderful thing to do. Been on you for doing it. I'm sorry that Rust, that Rusty got in this position, but that's where we're at. All right. What do we? Yes, that's it? Okay. All right. Uh, item eight, future agenda item. So the purpose for, of this is for council to give direction to staff by way of motion to have items placed on future agendas. This is not for discussion of the merits of the subject matter. Anybody want to put geotech reports on, on a future agenda?
Yep, you would.
Yeah. Okay, so. Jason, Ed. All is in favor of that?
Aye.
Okay, so we're going to do that. Any other items?
I had asked several minutes ago now since it hasn't been positioned, so many. To have on an agenda item, especially about allowing certain volunteer organizations to be able to use direct center at a reduced available cost. So my term's almost up. Hoping we could discuss it.
Probably got one more left.
My memory was that we said we would put it on an agenda item in the future.
Mayor, you have actually taken that off.
Oh.
Because we would be the only city in the metro area that would do such a thing.
Still appreciate a discussion, I guess.
Discussion, let's have the discussions next time. Anything else? Very none. Item nine, council quarters, the staff updates. I'd like to remind everybody that this section of the meeting is much less formal. You may hear some back and forth banner, it's a general joking around. We think this can add and build camaraderie and cohesiveness between staff and council. So we'll start with Luke Nelson.
I don't have anything, mayor.
Doorway. Uh, Jack? Jason?
Nothing.
Kayla?
Nothing.
Lindsay?
Nothing.
Jean Strabel?
Nothing, thank you.
Marissa?
Nothing.
All right. Uh, Ollie's not on, no. Jean Kelly?
Nothing.
Chief?
Yes, cops with cards. Our food raiser for the food pantry is next Wednesday. December tenth from four to seven at Fairway. We do have a challenge from former councilwoman Reva, who has challenged city employees, which includes council members to raise a thousand dollars towards the food pantry and if so, she will match that thousand dollars. So anybody who's willing, any city employee willing to donate cash or check, we appreciate it because Stephanie likes to pay that thousand and she has paid it several years in a row now and I would hate for her to get off this time. So. If you, uh, if you're not doing anything else, um, next Wednesday, pour it out and buy some food for the food insecure of our community and it would be greatly appreciated.
Guaranteed better weather.
I hope so. And I will tell you, I have given Craig, the manager of Fairway Business, [Crosstalk 00:08:29]. And I will tell you, I have given, uh, Craig, the manager at Fairway, the business because that new store, the Northwest Win on Cops With Cards, it's terrible.
Last year was miserable. Like they know.
Hey, high thirty-six.
There we go.
Considering, yes, Tony. I'm sorry.
Just wanted to remind everyone that Santa Day is on Saturday, so we'll be.
Oh, sorry.
Big deal.
It is a big deal.
So we should be.
Ten AM.
So we'll be headed out at night, or I'm sorry, eight o'clock in the morning, so he'll be making his rounds.
How many Santa's helpers do we have now?
More than one. Three, there's three, so. Yep, that's all.
Cause it, it's usually on community chat weekend, so I'll get to be home when Santa comes by this time.
I mean, I'll expect you in your robe with your.
No feet, no robe.
There.
Right. No robe, we don't wanna see that.
See the robe.
It's, it is a big, it's a big deal, yeah.
Yeah, thank you, mayor. Uh, the only thing I have is just to, um, share that tomorrow we're having our annual employee appreciation luncheon. Um, it is at the Public Safety Building in the Fire Base from twelve to noon, if any of you wanna join us. The Wellness and Safety Committee has worked really hard to make it a fun event. Mulletz is, uh, gonna be catering, so, uh, it should be a good time.
What are the times?
Is it twelve to noon or is it twelve to two?
Twelve to noon. No, it's twelve to two, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Pretty short.
Boy, that's gonna eat.
That's gonna be quick.
Yeah, it's gonna be real.
I want a recognition, just a little bit.
Uh, we had a twenty-two permits in November, so we're, so on track for our average, uh, housing year. So that's good, um, and remind your neighbors to shovel their snow when it snows.
Yeah. Alright.
Alright.
Got you, what's up?
No worries, um. Lots of comments on the subdivision standards. I, I do appreciate council listening to, um, both sides. And anywhere we can get is an improvement from where we've been, so I do appreciate your effort on that and nothing else. Thank you.
Alright, thank you.
George got whiskey in that.
Just a couple of things, I, uh, uh, let it, went ahead and let waste management know. That there'll be a change in representative, introduce a new representative. And, uh, I have a meeting Monday morning for coffee with the library group.
Okay. Awesome.
Moving right along.
Alright, good deal. George? Right?
Nothing.
Yep.
Nothing.
Uh, only thing I have is just a reminder, uh, as I said, community chat is the second Saturday, so it's on December thirteenth at nine o'clock in here. Appreciate anybody showing up.
Yeah.
Cause it's, gets lonely sometimes. Alright, well I have, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Motion by Cool, seconded by Livingston, all those fair say hi.
Hi.
Alright.
Eric, eight oh four PM, thank you.
I think it.